Alright, we're on the air. Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you to the Durango City Council, October 2nd. May we have a roll call, please? Councillor Pateen?
Here.
Councillor Brooke?
Here.
Councillor White?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Yousaf?
Here.
Mayor Marbury?
Here. And tonight, we have three proclamations. The first is the Terry Fiedler proclamation. And I would like to ask all of Terry's friends to join me at the podium, please. Well, I want to thank all of Terry's friends for coming tonight. And this is the Terry Fiedler Day, Saturday, October 6th. Whereas Terry Fiedler was a founder of Snowdown and contributed to the fabric of Durango. And whereas Terry Fiedler loved this town and all the mery-making that Snowdown created. And whereas Terry Fiedler was a kind, funny, and energetic soul, who saw the greatness in the arts and in Durango. And whereas Terry Fiedler's star will never dim because of his lasting influence on the spirit of Durango each January during Snowdown events. Now therefore I, sweetie Marbury, Mayor of Durango, do hereby proclaim Saturday, October 6th, 2018, as Terry Fiedler Day. And let's come around. Now, Snowdown gave me some meat in honor of Terry. And I'd like to introduce Kay Ushenreider. And she's going to accept the proclamation. And Devin Armstrong, give her two words about our favorite Terry.
Well, I just, having been dear friends with Terry for over thirty years, everything sweetie just said was pretty much what I was gonna say. Because of him, Snowdown has grown. He loved this community. He was a very humble person. He would be very humbled by this award, I'm sure. But if he had one thing to say to anyone and everyone, it would be, keep smiling.
Hello, everybody. I'm Devin Armstrong. I've been kind of coordinating events for Terry Fiedler Day. It's coming Saturday, October 6th. On behalf of Amy and Eric Fiedler, that's Terry's daughter and son. On behalf of myself, of course, and I think I can speak for everybody in this community who has participated in a Snowdown event or attended a Snowdown event. Could I see a show of hands of anybody who hasn't? I want to thank the Durango City Council for going to the effort to establish Terry Fiedler Day and particularly Mayor Marbury. Thank you so very, very much for recognizing our dear friend. He was really one of the foundations of our community, no matter how you slice it. And we all miss him dearly. On that note, we will be dedicating a bench to Terry's honor that my brothers at the Durango Lodge Number 507 of the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks has donated. Corner of Ninth Street and Second Avenue over here. We'll be dedicating that bench Saturday at noon. And I would like to invite all members of the City Council to attend, if you would be so kind. And I'm hoping that I can get Mayor Marbury to read this proclamation again to the Assembly and then hand it over to Amy, who will be here for the festivities. I believe that this bench is going to add beautifully to the public and art displays here in Durango, even though to Terry Fiedler, art was just some guy's name. Thank you all so very, very much.
The next proclamation is the library proclamation for our fabulous library community champion. And with the library champion and all of his friends, please come up here and join me at the podium. Here's our champion. And whereas recognizing that the success of any public library is enhanced and sustained by dedicated citizens, the Durango Public Library Advisory Board will single out certain individuals for particular appreciation through its Library Community Champion Initiative. The awarding of this personal distinction honors singular achievement and commitment on behalf of the library and in turn the community. And whereas Margaret Cozine and Jill Seifors nominated Steve Redding, our champion, for the Library Community Champion Award for his role on the Library Advisory Board from 2006 until 2015, much of its time as the board chair. And whereas Steve continues to serve as Chair Emeritus, and whereas Steve played a pivotal role in advocating for a new library, including being named the Chair of the Yes for Durango Library Bonds Committee and the Chair of the Library's Grand Opening Committee. And whereas Steve was intent on keeping the library relevant in the digital age and worked with the Library Advisory Board and library staff to introduce e-readers to the library collection. And whereas Steve ensured that a café area was included in the building plans. And when the recession hit, he worked with the Library Advisory Board to purchase the equipment needed to open a café, as well as solicit bids to operate the café. And whereas Steve provided strong leadership in a variety of areas, including the digi-- oh, I can't say the word. Digitalization of the Durango microfilm. And whereas Steve was dedicated to improving relations with the Friends of the Library by appointing a Library Advisory Board liaison to the Friends of the Library and from their friends to the Library Advisory Board. Where until recently, he also served as a Friends Vice Chair. And whereas the Library Advisory Board wishes to recognize Steve Redding publicly, for his dedication to the Durango Public Library, our community, and all that he did and continues to do to make the library a success. Now therefore I, sweetie Marbury, Mayor of Durango, do hereby proclaim Steve Redding as the 2018 Library Community Champion. Congratulations. They're gonna say nice things about you. Bill Lemire, the Chair of the Library Advisory Board, and Sandy Irwin, our Director, will be speaking.
Alright, so you don't get to talk after all. The Library Advisory Board began two years ago, this Library Community Champion Initiative, to recognize people in Durango who have represented some type of singular achievement in supporting this library. And we selected as our 2018 Library Community Champion, Steve Redding. And this represents not only singular achievement, but what we're trying to do with this initiative, this award, is recognize how important volunteerism is to this library. Because we have, through the Friends of the Library, President Miley Kane, the Friends of the Library, to the Friends of the Library and people who just volunteer their time to the library. I think we're up in the hundreds. So this library really, I'm sorry, this community really loves this library. And as far as that library goes, there's hardly anything, if you go into that library, there's hardly anything you use or see that wasn't in some fashion envisioned or supported or facilitated in some way by Steve Redding. So he is a truly deserving community champion. Congratulations, my friend.
Thank you, Bill.
I'd like to echo what Bill said about volunteerism. Not only is it the front of the library, but it's our boards and commissions, not only the Library Advisory Board, but the boards and commissions throughout the city. People volunteer their time to serve on these boards. And it takes a lot to do that. And so I'd like to express my appreciation for that, but especially for Steve, because he's been doing this for a long time. And when I came here eight years ago, I really, I got to know Steve and to see him as a mentor and a friend, who's always looking out for the best for the library and for the community of Durango. And we really appreciate everything you've done and continue to do. And thanks, Steve. You're awesome.
I see you, Mr. White.
Well, I said Wednesday, when I was presented with the award, I was embarrassed about this. Because I'm just one of many people. There've been a whole line of people before me and now after me that put Library Advisory Boards in good hands with Bill Lemire and with Sandy's directorship. So I'm comfortable stepping aside now, but it's been a great ride and I've enjoyed it. It's been a team effort and I've had a lot of help along the way. So thank you very much for the recognition.
The last proclamation I have is entitled Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. And with Gary Parsons, please come up here, he'll be accepting. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection Report, cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among US children between infancy and age fifteen, and is detected in nearly sixteen thousand of our country's young people each year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer, while many infants, children, and teens will suffer from long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded twenty-five years ago by Stephen Farstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetic Family, the American Cancer Fund for Children Incorporated and Kids Cancer Connection Incorporated are dedicated to helping these children and their families. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Children's Hospital Colorado in Aurora, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor toy distributions, KCC Supercar Experience, pet-assisted therapy, family sailing programs, and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore I, sweetie Marbury, Mayor of Durango, do hereby proclaim October 2nd as Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. And thank you, Gary, for accepting. Please step to the podium and talk to our community.
I'm not a big speech person. But on behalf of the Durango Lions Club, we want to thank the City Council and Mayor Marbury for this proclamation. And if you're not aware of the Durango Lions Club, we do a lot of volunteer work within our community. We do a kid site, which I don't know if you're familiar with. We recently purchased an eight-thousand-dollar camera where we go up to the schools and we can take pictures of kids in their eyes and tell you if they need glasses and how we do a referral. And also, Lions International is involved in the diabetes fight now, too, along with the kid cancer. I'd like to thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Before we have our next presentation, which is the Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility Project update with Greg Boyson, I just wanted to remind anyone, if you came into the City Council chambers and you would like to address the council during public participation, please sign in right down there. So that's your opportunity to talk to council. Thank you so much, Mr. Boyson, for joining us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's been about three months since I was here last to give you an update on the Santa Rita Water Reclamation Facility. So I wanted to take this opportunity to talk to you tonight. Again, I want to give a thank you out to Shannon Mitchell and Victor for all of the work they do on the website and keeping the day-to-day webcam going on the project. And I want to encourage anybody that would like to take a look at that to visit the city's website to do that. What we usually start these out with is a little aerial. This is with our camera that's flying over the project site. To the left was 2017, and then the other one was earlier this year. So this was done a few weeks ago and we're flying from south going up to north over the project site. You can see the amount of construction that's going on right now. And I've got a number of still shots that we'll go through real quickly, so I don't waste any of your time. But we'll get into a little bit more detail. I didn't think it was appropriate to do it right now. But those are great aerial shots of all the construction that is occurring as we go through the construction process. That's the new final clarifier, three and four, that is shown right now. And to the right is the existing clarifiers. And that one, that shot is of our new blower and chemical building that I'll talk to you about a little bit. So great shots that our staff is able to create and share with everybody. So what I'd like to go, uh-oh. What I'd like to go through tonight is a little different order. I'd like to start with the construction progress to show everybody what we've got built in the last three months. Then I'll go through the financial status and then give you a little update on the schedule. Again, this is a photograph of our chemical and blower building. It houses our big tanks for our alum chemicals, but mostly it contains our microturbines that provide the compressed air that go into the aeration basin. Now, the aeration basin is our main process for treating the raw sewage. This is our aeration basin. And then our side basin, or our side stream basin is to the north. And again, this is our major process in treating the raw sewage. In this photograph, you can see where the air is bubbling up through the product. And that creates a ultimate condition for our microorganisms to break down the sewage into a treatable process. So the aeration basin has been online since March. And what I have done is gone through and compared the test results from 2018 and 2017 to see what the aeration basin has actually done to improve the water quality. The test results show that the difference in E. coli has dropped 27% in that year. The ammonia has dropped 65%. The nitrates have gone down 74%, and total phosphorus has been reduced by 42%. So that's the first process that we put online in the wastewater treatment plant. We are looking forward to greater reductions in all of those chemical components that we're putting into the river as the processes come online in the next eight months. So this is an aerial view of the north end of the treatment plant. And I just wanted to go through it real quickly. You can see all of the congestion that's going on, all the construction that is occurring now. The existing round vessels are our primary clarifiers. And those are gonna get the domes placed over them for odor control. So I wanted to point those out. The domes are being assembled right now. They'll be installed on top of the clarifiers this month. Then there's the existing treatment complex building. It's only the shell that's left. Everything on the inside has been replaced with new motors, pumps, electrical, and controls. So the outside looks the same, but the inside has totally changed. Again, these are the new aeration basins that we just talked about. And I'll talk a little bit more about the side stream. The big crater out there that just occurred in the last week, that's the demolished area for the sledge storage building. That was the second of the last round buildings with the mirrors on it. So we've taken that down to make room for the new headworks building. The existing headworks building is just to the left of this photograph off the screen. That will be demolished when the new headworks is up and operational. The octagon building, that's our new digester two. That's a mirrored structure of our digester one. The digesters are used to take the sludge to create methane. And with that methane that we gather from both of those digesters, we run it through a microturbine to create electricity and heat to offset the cost of the treatment process. So we're pretty excited about to get more methane in order to run those turbines. And then there's the digester support building in between the two digesters. That houses all the heat transfer pumps and equipment to operate those digesters. But the bigger thing that the support building houses is the fog process. So fog is the fats, oil, and grease program that we're starting, where we collect all the fats and greases from the downtown restaurants and hotels. We put them in the digester and create methane with that material. So again, we're creating more electricity from a byproduct. And then there's the new dewatering building. And there's a photograph of the dewatering building. The block walls will be installed by the end of this month. The roof is gonna go on in November and that building will be dried in. The purpose of this building is we take the sludge from the digesters, we press as much water out of it as we can, we send that over to the side stream and it gets treated before it goes into our aeration basin and the process. The nice thing about the dewatering building is that it provides us with a relatively dry material. It's like fertilizer that we can place in trucks and we can haul to the landfill. And then Bondad or other gravel pits can use that to reclaim their soil and it goes to a useful purpose. Right now, we pay about $300,000 a year to haul our liquid sludge away to dry land, apply it. We think this is gonna be a huge cost savings for the city that we're gonna haul the dried sludge with our own vehicles and staff. This is the digester support. The existing digester is to the left and the new one is behind the scaffolding. This building will have the roof trusses installed next Monday and the roof will fall. So before winter hits, we're gonna have the digester support and the new dewatering building fully enclosed, so all of the pumps and motors and interior work can be done in the dry and heated condition. So that's our goal, is to get those buildings enclosed before winter hits. The big, heavy winter that we're gonna get this year. So, everyone's hoping for. I just wanted to give you a quick little shot of, this is the lower level of the digester support building. It just shows the intricacy of the number of pumps and motors and pipes and electrical and controls HVAC that goes in all of these buildings. The two photographs that I showed you, it just looks like a shell going up. I just want you to know that the basements of both of those buildings are almost plumbed out. So we've got a big head start on completing those buildings, even though it doesn't look like that from the outside. This is the south end of the treatment complex. This is the two new clarifiers. The existing clarifiers are the last process before the water is discharged into the Animus River. With the two new clarifiers, three and four, we'll be able to double that treatment process. So again, we feel that the amount of nutrients and chemicals that we're putting into the river will be greatly reduced when these two new clarifiers come online. This is clarifier number four. That shows the gang walls. It's a circular tank that we're using to build those facilities. The concrete has been placed in the south wall and the north wall will be finished this week. Financially, the current contract is a little bit under $5.5 million. The total contract amount that has been completed thus far is $39.3 million. And so therefore, this indicates that the contract is about 70% complete. The contingency on the project, so far there's been a total of 27 contract change orders for the construction and five design changes, which totaled $2.2 million. The original contingency was 5.2, so that leaves us roughly $3 million in our contingency. So that's about 58% from where we started. So if you look at the 70% amount of construction that's completed based on the finances, compare it to, we've only used about 40% of our contingency, we're doing very well financially. So I don't see any problems. In the future, we've already excavated the sledge storage building. That's the last vertical building that we're gonna build. So I don't see any unknowns that would come and jeopardize our contingency. As far as the schedule goes, the contract allows 746 days. We are really close to our schedule. I think that we're within a few weeks. Again, depending on how the winter's gonna go. If we have a mild winter, I'm certain that we'll make that deadline. If we have a lot of snow days, then it may lapse a little bit. But as of today, we've used 505 construction days. Divide that by the contract amount that says that the project is about 68%. If you remember back to the financial, that was about 70%. So again, a good check on ourselves on where we're at as far as the contract goes. So for our next quarterly update, I hope to be able to give you the UV disinfection building and then the headworks building. The UV disinfection goes on top of the existing contact chambers. So again, there's no excavation involved with that and the headworks building excavation is done. So again, I think that we're on good track for completing on time and very good track for meeting our budgetary restrictions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyson. I love it when you say we're on schedule and on budget. That's terrific news. Councillor, do you have any questions or comments?
I have one, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Mr. Boyson, thanks again. You've always given us more detail than I could ever want to know about the wastewater reclamation process. But it's greatly appreciated and obviously, you've done just an exceptional job, you and your team, at the role of building this facility. One of the things I'm sure many people would like to know, in terms of these domes that you described, that would go over, is it the clarifiers that they go?
Right, primary clarifiers.
What kind of odor reduction would you estimate that that will incur once those are installed?
So the domes collect all of the air and gases that come off the primary clarifier, which is the second process in all of the processes. So it is the most odorous. So we collect all the air and gases from there and then we run them through activated carbon filters. So I would say that all of the odors coming off the primary clarifiers will be alleviated.
Great. Well, I'm sure we'll look forward to that. Will we be able to still detect it as you ride your bike by there? Is it a bit of substantially reduced? What do you mean?
It will be substantially reduced. There will still be some odors there. To me, it's more of an earthy type odor than the raw sewage that you probably smell today. But it'll be greatly reduced. Like I said, the domes go on this month and then the odor control, it is a separate unit that goes on in December and January. So after the first of the year, we'll be fully operational for our odor control.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mayor Pro Tim?
Just interesting, can you tell me where, I think you call it the sludge, goes into the Animus River?
It's the affluent, so it's really water. And it's actually... And technically, the water that leaves the wastewater plant is cleaner than the river water.
It is?
It is. So it is today and it will be better in the future.
It goes down below, though, I would think, below the stream? Below the plant?
Yes, it's released below the plant. It's released below the ALP intake across the river, if that makes you locate it. Just above the bridge, the highway bridge, is where we discharge into the river.
It's not sludge?
Yeah, it's clean water.
It's clean water?
It's substantially cleaner than what you see in the river. So if you want to come and take a tour, I'd be glad to. You can look down at the bottom of our final clarifiers that are 20 feet deep. It's really substantially cleaner than sometimes the river looks, especially if there's a flood or in the fire area.
And how often do they test that water?
Daily. We test it all day long.
Okay.
Great. Questions?
Yeah, thanks Greg for making about a three-hour meeting condensed into incredibly efficient presentation here. And the thing that I think clearly we're on track and change orders are not out of control and clearly within the realm of what you would expect in a project like this. And it's been well managed. So with that, we can look forward to the admin building being bid separately and as a second phase, the culminating project for the, which on a separate timeline will be completed. Is there intent for, a schedule for putting that out to bid and so forth?
Yes, sir. We have updated the admin building design drawings to the 2015 IBC and the IECC. You recently adopted those 2015 code apartments. The previous admin building was designed in the previous code, so we had to get those drawings updated. We've had a public meeting last Thursday for all the local contractors. We planned to put those out to bid. And there's two buildings. There's the admin building and then the back truck building that we removed from the original contract that we're under now. So we have two buildings that we're going to put out to bid at the middle of November. There's a pre-bid in the middle of December and we open bids, I think, January 17th is the plan right now. So if all goes well and we get a successful bidder, we'll probably start construction sometime in July or August. I need to let the current contractor finish up his project and move offsite before I can move a new contractor, new project, onto that site. So that's why I'd love to get the two contractors to work together and get them started in January, February, but it's not going to happen. They just don't get along that well. So anyway, the project is proceeding well. We've got the designs done and we're out to bid in really, you know, a month.
If council might remember that, the primary impetus for dissecting that out of the overall treatment plant effort, the larger project was to, it's more conventional construction and could be completed with more local resources. So we thought that that would be better to pull that, extract that out of the sewer treatment plant project and better to utilize local contractors for that more conventional office building type of construction. So, and that sounds great. And of course, we've got, one of those design change orders was probably to update for the new codes that we passed this year.
Part of that $2 million change was a substantial amount for that change in design work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering, with most of the excavation completed and many, most of the buildings closing in before the winter, how vulnerable is the project to winter conditions?
Other than the new headworks building, which will have the foundation and hopefully some of the walls up before the big snows come, I don't foresee that being a delay to us at all. We're mostly enclosed in the processes. The basins are done. So other than one building, that's not the end of the world. We do get a good snowfall this year.
Great. Thank you. Once again, I'll just echo my colleagues in appreciation for the work that you've done and the clarity of your presentations and the manifest success of your oversight.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyson. I had asked for the project to come every three months to City Council to keep the community informed. And we learn so much and we're so very grateful that you're on schedule and on budget. And I will speak for Councilor White. We will be off-council, but I sure hope we get invited to the river trail down the road. Well, thank you so much for coming tonight. We're moving on to our consent agenda. And the consent, I can't talk. The consent agenda is intended to allow the City Council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item Number Six. Ms. Phillips?
Item 4.1 and 4.2 are approval amendments. 4.1, the regular meeting of September 4th, 2018. 4.2, the study session of September 11th, 2018. 4.3 and 4.4 are discussion of possible action items. 4.3 concerns resolution R.2018-39, authorizing an additional appropriation of the capital projects fund and to the 2015 sales tax fund for the Animus River Trail asphalt repair project. 4.4 concerns resolution R.2018-40, to formalize City Council meeting procedures. Items 4.5 and 4.6 are requests for public hearings with a proposed date of October 16th, 2018. 4.5 is to consider the Mountain Trace Plan Development Amendment. And 4.6 is to consider the Lightner Creek Village 1 Storage Condominium Platte.
Thank you. Would any council like to take, remove? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Mayor Proton Yusuf?
Yes.
Councilor Bettin?
Yes.
Councilor Ricky?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes.
And Ms. Blake, would you get the public participation sheet?
We're moving into public participation and this section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. City Council will not respond to the questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the City Council. Citizens wishing to speak, and they have signed up prior to the start, the mayor will call you up. You have three minutes to speak. Ms. Blake will be timekeeping. She'll raise her hand when you get close to the 30 seconds. And we'll begin with Bill LaMaire, please. And if you'll state your name and address at the podium, Mr. LaMaire.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Bill LaMaire and I live at 2018 East Second Avenue here in Durango. I would like to say a few words this evening in support of a yes vote on the 2A ballot question. Ordinarily, I don't think I fall robotically into line with all tax increases because I think that they impact people along the income scale differently. But in this case, I think that in the matter of 2A, the things that seem, that what I've read are targeted for this enhanced revenue are essential and beneficial to everyone along the income spectrum. Roads, streets, the capital projects that you've identified, these are clear infrastructural, basic needs that should not be put off. And I believe as the mayor of the council, in an article recently pointed out recently, that these are things that will only cost more if they play. When it comes to 2A, I'm also reminded of a political consultant who advises his political candidate who's having trouble saying on message, "It's the economy," stupid. And I think in this case, we might substitute, "It's the infrastructure." But dropping the epithet is stupid, I hope. In any event, it is the infrastructure and I think that's what 2A is targeted toward and it's something we need. Without strong infrastructure, I think many of us have seen cities around the country who've not done this decay slowly but surely. And I don't think anybody in Durango wants to see that happen. I did tour during the community engagement process, the police station, and you were so right. It is a building that was built, I think, to accommodate 33 people and now it accommodates 66 police professionals and support people. And that's just not adequate. It's not good for police efficiency and it's not good for the community's safety. And finally, I want to say something about the library because as you know, I was up here earlier talking about our library, Community Champion. And again, here's another example. I don't know if 2A is targeted toward this by hope, that the funds raised through 2A can help us begin to open that library on Sunday. It's, we're one of the few libraries of our size and scale in this state that's not open on Sunday. And we've got this beautiful library, this beautiful, I think, $15 million investment out of the Animus River and it's only open six days a week. And I think, and this library also, three or?
30 seconds.
Oh, 30 seconds. And I just want to say, just like the police department working in cramped quarters, our library, right now, is staffed. That's a big library, which is about 50% bigger than the Carnegie Building that we had earlier, is staffed with this exact same number of people that that smaller library has. So they have tightened their belts and so forth. But if we're going to open on Sunday, they need more revenue, more help for personnel in order to open on Sunday. So thank you very much.
Thank you so kindly. Janice Schaefer, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Janice Schaefer. Address 333 County Road 251 in Durango. Thank you, Mayor Marbury and City Council. I represent the Veterans Stand Down that we're having this Thursday at the fairgrounds from 8:30 to 3:30. A little bit about the Veterans Stand Down. It's a national event. It was, I think many of you know what happened to a lot of our Vietnam veterans when they returned home and it's something that hopefully will never happen again. So in the 80s, two Vietnam veterans wanted to have, they called a stand-down, reprieve for these veterans who were living in pretty bad conditions and just needed support. So they started these stand-downs. In California, they're three days. In Durango, it's one day. It's a chance for the veterans to, as many that have come fresh out of the service, it's kind of like a whole different country, going from the military to the civilian world. Some people are just okay and some have a difficult time. So what this does is it brings the community together and the community says, "We support you, we're here for you." The first year we had it, we had over 60 veterans come in. We had over 30 who were homeless, who came down out of the mountains, out of the ditches to say, "I didn't know this kind of support was here for me." So what the Veterans Stand Down offers is not just benefits from the VA. The, excuse me, the New Mexico Veterans Administration comes up and they get flu and pneumonia shots. There's help for homeless veterans. There's hope, I mean, there's assistance for every veteran here. So we have everything from haircuts, medical, dental. They can get help with their medical records, their military records, hot meals, the rec center has offered showers for those that need the showers, clothing, employment, anything you can think of, education. And the most wonderful thing is when one of these vets comes up to you after they've made their circle around the fairgrounds and said, "I started back to school, I found a job and I have a place to live." So there's many organizations that come together to help these veterans. It's called a hand up, not a handout. And it gives these veterans the support they need to get back in the civilian world. Thank you so much and I hope to see you all there.
Thank you so kindly. Just on another note, the veterans outreach in Bodo. I know you're involved with that. And several of us attended the open house and that's a way for veterans to see all of the services in our county. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're moving on to, well, actually, we have no legislative or policy hearings. And we, oh, come back, come back, my computer. We do have one ordinance, 10.1. And Mr. Nelson, would you like to begin that, please?
This is the ordinance that follows the public hearing the council had two weeks ago on the adoption of a new storm water drainage master plan. As you recall, the Assistant City Engineer Keith Doughty presented that. So this is followed up to that and it's ready for adoption. I don't have the number, I didn't get that from Amy, so it's.
It's going to be 22.
22, so ordinance number 2018-22.
Thank you so much. I'll look for a motion.
I move that we approved ordinance 2018-22.
Second.
And roll call, please. Excuse me? Councilor White?
Yes.
Council Ricky?
Yes.
Council Bettin?
Yes.
Council Yusuf?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. And we are moving into council reports and actions tonight. And so I'll begin with a few things that I need to remind our community that the fall cleanup begins on October the 8th. You can go to degub.org and find your neighborhood and it will tell you exactly when the fall cleanup will happen. Also, the cowboy parade is this Saturday at 10 o'clock and some of the city council will be in that one. And our condolences go out to two employees of the city that passed away, Yvonne Alves and Moises Dominguez. And so we offer our sympathy and our love to their families. And with that, I will look to other city councilors for council reports and actions. And so, Mr. Ricky, I'm going to start with you. I think you have something to talk about in terms of our effects on 2A.
Sure, sure. Well, I'll start with, I just returned about 10 minutes before we started our session here from Denver. On Friday, I was asked to be, participate in a panel discussion for ZDOT, State Department of Transportation, their transportation summit. We were at, Durango was asked to represent a unique partnership that resulted in $100 million of funding for the 550-160 corridor. So I was able to talk a little bit about that and present that to the folks all around the state in terms of how that unique partnership came together, being the Transportation Commission that put in over $54 million, Southern Youth Growth Fund, DOLA, who I had lunch with Herb Halter yesterday as well to thank him specifically for his multimillion dollar contribution from the state of Colorado and all the folks that really stood up to make that funding a success. We also talked about how Durango is embracing the technological changes in transportation in terms of our land use codes and potential transit development along transit corridors as we have defined through our North Main Character District and our Commune of the Rio Character District and how that will set up Durango appropriately into the future for autonomous vehicles. And actually made a pitch for being the first town in the state of Colorado for autonomous trolley. I figure if they're going to cut us back $800,000, at least we could get an autonomous trolley. How's the deal?
Did you get the trolley? Did you get it?
You know, there's, actually, you should know that the state of Colorado, we have more pilot firms that are doing research in this area in terms of autonomous trolley. If there's going to be one evolved, it's probably going to be built in the state of Colorado and is looking for a home to test drive that vehicle. So we'll see. There's actually some serious conversation about that as well. So, past couple of days, I've been in Blackhawk as a representative of El Palmar Foundation. And I might just give a shout out for LaPlata Youth Services. They were recognized, our local nonprofit, LaPlata Youth Services was recognized as outstanding nonprofit in the state of Colorado by El Palmar Foundation. We gave them a $25,000 check yesterday and our last evening. And they, it was, it was, it was great. So folks from all over the state of Colorado recognize LaPlata Youth Services' efforts in providing services to youth. My counterpart, Beth Drum, was also with me. We were able to, we have some discretionary funding. She gave $5,000 to Trails 2000. I gave $5,000 to Durango. The film festival, another $5,000 went to MSI. So there's a number of nonprofits that we were able to give, local distribution of small grants. There's a, they're published of. There's a, there, we published a larger funding. We have another quarter million dollars of funding that will be given from El Palmar to OSCEs and some other cooperative nonprofits that are addressing mental health in our youth community as well. With that, you know, I just want to start out about this 2A and talk about, as an architect and land use planner, I'm always looking at deferred maintenance and the lifestyle cost of buildings and so forth. And we all know that our biggest, one of our biggest assets is our road system. And what is a community without its connectivity and our road systems? And I'm reminded that one of the last sales, property tax increase was 1982. I moved to Durango in 1980, and we didn't even have the bridge to Boto Industrial Park, or the High Bridge was not in place. There was no such thing. That's how far we've come in 38 years. And so, we're still working with a tax base that was based on 1982 economy and needs. So when I talk about deferred maintenance, I mean, we're, that's, we can now see and accurately predict that we are going to not have ability to maintain the road system that we've created with our current tax structure. And so it seems so simple and so obvious that this council can't kick this can down the road any further, that we need, as we've discovered over, we need a funding via this tax increase to maintain our roads, our major asset into the future. I think I particularly like the hybrid concept, 50% approximately, that is property tax-based, combined with a 50% of the total revenue required, being supported by sales tax as, to give us an increase in property tax that is a stable source of income that we can always rely on, because sales tax, and I did sit through a, you know, an economic projection this morning about when the 10-year cycle of recessions and so forth hit, the sales tax isn't as helpful and as predictable as property tax. So the combination that's been suggested by our constituents over the past period of public engagement is, I think, a really good combination to move forward with our maintenance of, maintenance of our major asset being roads and infrastructure.
Thank you, Councilor Brooke. Councilor Batine, you want to?
Yeah, just a couple of things to add on to Councilor Broke's conversation about our infrastructure. Their, the tax need that 2A is trying to address is caused by a structural issue that everybody's really familiar with, in that our expenses are increasing since 1982 relative to the cost of the growth of the community, but the sales tax revenue, which is the dominant form of our revenue in our budget cycle, is not increasing in kind with that increased expense, both through the growth of our community as well as to inflation in the community. And so the expense and revenue lines cross here in 2020, and this initiative is designed to solve that problem for two very important criteria, one being our infrastructure, our roads and sidewalks and curbs and gutters, as well as the police. One of the things that I think a lot of folks wonder is how do you come up with a number relative to how much money is needed to solve that problem? And it's interesting, once you get involved in the city government, you realize how detailed, how much energy and effort and expertise go into that process. And one of the things that we've learned about as a council is that when our streets department goes out to figure out what to do in the streets and how to maintain them, the biggest thing that they're looking at is trying to maintain streets by maintaining them over time, by fixing the small things that are very, much less costly than doing big things, much like many of you may remember we had to do for the entire Florida Road reconstruction project, which had to be a special tax and had to be a substantial special tax. And so the idea here is to be able to maintain what we have and make sure that those things that are in good condition are kept in good condition and their lifetime can go on to its absolute maximum, which can be up to 40 years for good pavement, and also to reconstruct those that aren't and make sure that those are maintained over time. So this initiative will solve that problem for us. And the way that we find out which projects have needs is through a pavement conditions index that's done every five years. It's done by an external firm, and we look at that data and can absolutely assess where those funds should be applied. And it's quite scientific, it's quite accurate, and those funds and the amount asked for in this initiative are relative specifically to those needs in that index. And so that's what we're asking for. Without doing that, the cost will actually increase, and it's not, it's not a far reach to say that taxes would have to increase if we don't maintain what we have. And they would have to increase far more than this is asking.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you. I think that there's a lot of people that do agree with the need. We're talking about our core foundation, the essential framework of our public works. There are a few people that I've spoken with, though, who have suggested that we should consider the reallocation of our parks and recreation funding sources for this purpose. And that is what I wanted to address specifically, just so that I can educate, you know, also take the time to educate the community and talk about these sources. We have two parks and recreation funding sources. Number one, in April of 2015, voters overwhelmingly approved a half-cent sales tax for an additional 20 years to support our dedicated parks and recreation funding. This was, this was set to expire just next year in 2019, but it will now expire in year 2039. It generates approximately $4 million per year. Let's remember that this was just two and a half years ago, the voters overwhelmingly approved this ballot initiative 2 to 1, because the majority of our residents recognize the importance of supporting our parks and recreation. They recognize that a robust and active parks and recreation system in our community is extremely important to maintaining and sustaining our quality of life, to ensuring the health and fitness of our residents, and to contributing to our economic and environmental well-being of our community. However, there remain a few that do think that we have enough parks and that we've done enough in the realm of parks and recreation. I can tell you, though, that our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board would suggest just the opposite. They have acquired a list of over 40 parks and recreation projects that have been identified by our community residents that would, they would love to see funded by this parks and recreation tax. These Parks and Recreation Advisory Board members go through a grueling experience every year. I've been a part of that process myself, where they listen to our community residents vying for these different projects, and they have to painstakingly prioritize these projects that then come in front of council. It's a difficult process, and there is no way that we will be able to fund even half of the projects on the list, nor can we get to them fast enough to satisfy our residents with this funding. Some of the projects on that list include completion of the Animus River Trail, all the way to the north and south, Camino Underpass for safe crossing, Oxbo River Access, Kundif Park Development, Santa Rita Park redevelopment, a beach at Lake Night Horse, continuation of our community forestry management plan. The list goes on and on. People would like pickleball courts. They would like sand volleyball courts. They would like more tennis courts. We can't begin to satisfy the need fast enough. So while there's some that say we think that we have enough parks and we've done enough with our parks and recreation, I think that we recognize that if we were to reallocate this funding source, we would literally strangle our Parks and Recreation Department, and it would have a significant impact on our quality of life going forward. The other thing that's important to recognize is that these amenities and these parks that we are offering to our community, they're available to everyone in our community, regardless of age, race, or income distribution. And I think that that's very important. There's not one council member that thought that this was in the best interest of our community, as we thought and we believe that our strong parks and recreation system in our community is one of our strongest attributes and assets that we have going for us. The second parks and recreation funding source that we have is our 2005 sales tax for open space preservation and stewardship and the development and maintenance of our trails. This is also a half-cent tax. Half of it goes to the debt service on our library in Florida Road that will go on until 2025, so that is off the table. The remaining half, a significant portion of it, over $500,000 a year, goes to maintaining and sustaining what we have purchased with our 2005 funds. The ballot language for that tax was very specific. We wanted to ensure that we maintained and preserved what we have. And so a significant portion of those funds go to that purpose. Therefore, as a council, we recognize two things regarding this tax. Number one, the funds available would be insufficient to address the infrastructure needs that we currently have in our community. And number two, we recognize the importance of maintaining and sustaining what we have. So I just wanted to bring that up. I know that there's some that say, "Reallocate that money," but I think that as a council, we are looking forward, and we're looking at our community as comprehensively, and we recognize the huge asset that our parks and recreation brings to our community.
Thank you. Councilor White?
Yep. I would take off on a slightly different tack here. Councilor Broke mentioned the hybrid character of the proposal. We heard very strongly from citizens that they strongly prefer a sales tax over property tax, but there was a very significant number of people said, "Well, half and half would be okay." I mean, the choices in these surveys were any sales tax, the equivalent in property tax, or 50/50. In fact, what we're doing is 60/40. So we're going more than halfway toward the preference expressed by our citizens for a sales tax. And the reason for that is that the non-residents, the, our neighbors from out in the county who come into town, many of them every day, and also our tourists who swell our population during the summer, contribute to our sales tax base. And so they will be contributing to the maintenance of our street and also the, primarily to the maintenance of our street. The number that we picked, 5.4 mils for the property tax, did not just come out of thin air. It's got two components. There's 2.2 mils that is what's needed to bond the cost of the new police station. It's 25 years, so that we, in fact, can spread that cost over that long period of time, so we're not trying to spend 20 or 20-plus million dollars all at once, which we don't have that total sum. It's important to be able to borrow that and be able to pay it back. The other piece of that is there's a fairness issue between the current taxpayers and those who are all going to be benefiting from these buildings for their lifetime. And so one of the things that bonding does is share the costs, if not quite intergenerationally, certainly between current and future taxpayers. The other 3.2 mils is what we need to be able to pay all of our obligation to the fire district from property tax. That's what the residents who, and businesses outside the city who are members of the Durango Fire Protection do. And this has been, the disparity between the property tax rates in and outside the city has been a stumbling block to unifying the fire department for the last 15 years since the Durango Fire and Rescue Authority was formed. And when you had a leap from the existing, in 1982, 2.5 mils, to what is now 8.2, that was just basically too big a jump for, especially for the business community, who pay four times the tax rate of residential property. And so last year, the fire district ran a campaign for a 2.5 mil increase, which is what they needed to be, just to keep them going continually in the red. We ran a similar motion initiative for the city for a 2.5 mil increase to exactly match what the county was doing, because we didn't have that money. And so both of those had to pass, and they both passed overwhelmingly. So the 3.2 mils would close the gap and enable us, the city, to fund really important public safety, our new police station and our fire district obligation, with the most, most stable revenue source we can think of, which is property tax. And so then the rest of it is, would be the 0.55 cents, that's 50, what, 55, 0.55%, that's 50 cents, 55 cents of $100. And so that is the difference. Most of that money would go into the streets. My colleagues have already talked about the importance of taking care of what we had. And that was the message we heard from the, from residents over the entire year that we've been doing this public engagement process. Go back to basics and take care of what you have. We love, we love city services, I think 75% satisfaction rate, which is very, very high. And they want, but they said, "Look, take care of it so that it continues, so we can continue to be satisfied." And so that was the motivation we have for moving forward with this initiative. We do appreciate that it's an increase in taxes. It's, we're all going to pay, but when you look at the numbers, they're not huge increases. And as Mr. Lemire said, that is, you know, a benefit to the entire community. Even, even the lower-income people who disproportionately pay more sales tax compared to their income also get the benefit of what we're doing to build the quality of life in the community.
Thank you. When we talk about taking care of what we have, I think about the men and women in blue. And every time I hear a siren, and I live on the west side, I hear that siren saying, "Hang on, we're almost there." And with that, I wanted to talk about the police department. The, part of this initiative is about having a new police station. The old police station used to be a car dealership, and it was, at one time, a fire station and also a police station. And then the fire department moved out. The police department has grown considerably, and they have made offices out of closets. There's no room for the evidence. They have xercons where the evidence is being kept, because there's not enough room over there. And I think about the men and women in blue that every day go to businesses, they go to parks, they go to homes, and unquestionably, they serve our community. And the building over there is, quite frankly, it's outlived its usefulness. It's inefficient and it's ineffective. There is no room, for example, when you go into the lobby area, there's no particularly a quiet, sensitive space to be interviewed if you're having problems or questions over there. There's no room to sit. The police department would like to hire eight more offices, officers. There's no room to put them over there. We have enjoyed a community engagement team downtown. You will see, especially this summer, there was motorcycle policemen, there were men and women walking the beat. They also are on the Animus River Trail. That gives great comfort to people who are downtown. It gives great comfort to business owners as well as to our tourists. We would like to see more of that in our community. But the funding for the police department is critical. We've reached that stage. And so, Amber, you had, there's some slides I've asked you to put up. People said, "Well, what are you going to do to reduce expenses?" See which slide shows up. So city council has looked at some possible ways, okay, they said, "Do two things. Increase some fees for users and also see what you can do to reduce some expenses." So on the board, you'll see some potential fee increases. But yet, that only brings in about $198,000 if we did any and all of those. Not much towards a $2 million police department. The next slide talks about what can you do to reduce, make some savings. We all do that in our own budgets. So the city council's looking at reducing some memberships into organizations. They are looking at not using the newspaper in terms of notices, but putting up some links to save some money. There are no capital improvements. That means in 2019, there are no street projects, period zero anywhere. No surfacing, no construction, nothing is happening in the city of Durango. And there are no new employees being hired as well, not in the general revenue. I think there was mentioned that in 2009, the city manager, through attrition, there were 39 positions that were lost in 2009 due to the Great Recession, and also the library closed. And so we are still in that mode of the library's still closed. So I think what you've heard... So, I think what you've heard from city council is from tonight, is talking about the basic needs, infrastructure and a police station. And it's really up to the voters, but I will tell you that I have great faith in the people of Durango. You voted twice for our county neighbors' roads and bridges, twice you voted. It failed in the county. So, I know that you understand the needs of the city of Durango. You love it as much as anybody in this room does, and you are investing in the future of Durango. And if you want more information, you can go for, to the fact sheet. It's on degov.org. On the front page, there's, on the city website, it talks about the facts, strictly the facts. And it looks at your, how you calculate. The staff used my, my home as the example, and it was assessed value, not market value. And my potential for paying more property taxes would be $13 a month. And I am more than willing, as a retired school teacher living on a pension, to say, I want to do that for the men and women in blue. If you go to the police department and you stand in a hallway shoulder to shoulder, that's it. There's no more room. And we all know that policemen carry and women carry more gear, just physically more gear. There's no locker rooms to accommodate the gear that they must carry in their police cars. The police cameras, we had a study session a few weeks ago, and they were at $100,000 for the safety of the police officers and the safety of the public. We know that exists in other towns. I heartily hope that we can make this happen for the safety of our police officers. So, when you hear that siren, and it's saying to you, hang on, we're almost there, and we're almost there with our ballots. They drop on October the 15th. Please consider all that you've heard tonight and vote yes on 2A.
Yes, sir.
I have one important announcement that I have to add. I have nothing to do with the ballot issue, but I, as you all probably know, I've been having a weekly office hour. And for the last several months, I've been doing that steaming bean. I learned just today for sure that that space is no longer going to be available. So, for, at least for the, in the short term, for the next few weeks, I will be reverting to 11:30 a.m. on Thursdays in the city manager's conference room across the hall. So, anybody who wants to come and share your, share your thoughts about the city with the councillor, I'll be happy to see you there.
Thank you. And with that, we're moving into 12.1, which is a discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing specific legal questions with the city attorney as permitted in CRS 24-6-402-4B. I'll look for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to convene an executive session to discuss specific legal questions with the city attorney as permitted in CRS 24-6-402.
Second. A roll call, please. Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Counselor Batine?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
And Mayor Marbury?
Yes. And that concludes October 2nd city council meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight.